Well, first of all, I'd like to welcome you all. Thanks for coming in the middle of summer to a business opportunity. I'm sure that you can think of other things that you can do right away. Good to see you all here and I know that on behalf of the board we appreciate your interest and support. A call meeting's ordered at 4:30. We have a really ambitious agenda today, so hopefully we're not going to drive it too long. To start off, I'd like to move to adoption of the agenda. And we have one late addition which is under correspondence and it'll be number E, so that's five E, and it's a letter from Allen, New Jersey. Are there any other amendments or changes that we've got to make to the agenda? Do you have a motion to drop the agenda? I have an add and please send. Please discuss them. All in favor? If they don't, carry on. Before we get too much further into the meeting, just while I'd like to say again that Ann Fisher has agreed to take the minutes for us and we greatly appreciate that. And I must say that both Ann and Gloria have been really great during this transition in terms of taking out tax for tax and helping out in the office. So we really do appreciate it. Ann is recording the minutes and that's being recorded for her to then do the minutes after the meeting and the recordings destroyed after that. And I see that Mary has her video camera, so I'm assuming that's the only recordings that are happening today. The first order of business today is under petitions and delegations. The board has invited Brian to come and give us a bit of an update on the project because of course we have a number of issues that we're going to have to begin to work closely together to address and get implemented. This is not a public presentation per se, it's a presentation to the board. So the board may have some questions for Brian, but it's not open to the audience to be asking questions at this point. We may gather opportunities to have that happen. So without any further ado, maybe I'll turn it over to you, Brian, to fill us in.
Thanks, Karen. I guess we had a little bit of an update at the AGM in April, but to bring everybody up to date, I guess the element in the room is declaring that we've done in the Argyle area, that Argyle Road is going to be the first subdivision. We're going to put a four-lane road up on Argyle, a signalized intersection at our path. The road will go up into the development on the west side of the railroad tracks. The clearing that you see on the, about 10 acres have been cleared on the, between the highway and the railroad tracks. That's a, an area that's going to be jointly commercial and zone for $35,000 square feet of commercial. We're not going to put any more here than that. We're going to run it opposite. The intent is that Argyle will be a four-lane road with a sidewalk on the south side of the road. It will be landscaped. It will have a block retaining wall that will be terraced and landscaped. It looks pretty darn ugly right now. I feel bad for that. I had somebody out there today that's looking at whether or not we can haul a lot of the material away. You know, the material that we burnt in March through May, you know, we don't want to be burning at this point. What we're also looking at doing is grinding some of it into hightail. So bear with us for, you know, a little bit longer. We're looking to get rid of it. We don't want to see that out. But the quarter will be, once we can get going on the development, you'll see a big change there. It's going to be a landscaped corner. We're going to put the hydro lines underground there. You're going to see a big change. There'll be trees planted along the top of the bank. The trees that came out were not intentionally taken out. We took out the trees to that buffer and then hydro wanted the trees taken out because they didn't want, had any windfall going across the hydro lines. What we're going to do is put some native trees. We'll put probably some more conifers back in there and it'll, this time next year it's going to be totally different. You always have to undo a lot of things before you can, before you can unify them and that's the process that we're in right now. The, that's that development there. We've also cleared an area where we're going to put the wastewater treatment plant. The wastewater treatment plant is in the ministry's hands right now. We're going through the MSR process. We're looking at having the wastewater treatment plant in place and operating by this time next year. In order to do that, and before we can do any real work in that development, we have to upgrade the Unibail Water System. And the, all of the assets for the upgrade to the Unibail Water System have been sitting in Langley, ready for assembly, didn't there since May? We have to, to get that happening for, you know, too much longer. It's a 14-week process once we get going and we can take and have the new filtration, UV coronation system in place in 14 weeks. That's out of my hands, that's in the hands of UVI-B and the regional district. We've done all we can do, yet there has to be resolution between this board and the regional district. And the province has got some saying as well, but the upgrades that we're prepared to put in, everything being in place right now, meet the 4-3-2-1-0 PHA process. That will be placed on the cloud road. We have to expand the works area on the cloud road. We have to, in order to put the upgrades into the system, we have to clear an area, expand the works yard fence. We have to raise the level to an area that is in close proximity to the same level of the top of the reservoir. We'll be taking that and housing all of the filtration UV coronation system into a new building. And the existing building can't be removed at that point, but the new building will be a much larger building. It'll have all of the upgrades which will give you your clean, no turbidity in the water water system. So that's there. That's, whenever we get to go ahead, 14 weeks down the road and, you know, here today, I'm going to stay another month on top of that, but it's ready to go. In conjunction with this development, there will probably be some other housing that will go into what we call this number six road. Number six road will be, will be built at the same time as, or in close proximity to the same time as Argyle Road is going to be built. We will take and, we need to have this road up to the wastewater treatment plant and it will be, it will be constructed at that time. So it'll be, you know, again, if this is in place this time next year, this road will be in place as well. We're also looking at doing some work in the village. The village is going to have, we're looking at seniors complex initially. We're looking at there being a financial institution down there. We have first base of a low-rise condo complex that will be on the, on the first fairway, on the golf course. We're looking at construction of the golf course in 2012. We're looking at construction of the clubhouse. Clubhouse being there, constructed over a period of time from 2012 through 2013, golf course opening in 2013. We're looking at proceeding with the marina development as well. We're looking at, we're looking at a clean, green development. One of the things that the regional district specified, we offered up first, but one of the issues was they wanted to see a milk green or beet type development. And that's what that is going to be. So the effluent, the treated effluent coming out of the wastewater treatment plant will be married with the basic surface runoff that comes out of the property. All of these, these ponds at this point have all been filled with some surface runoff. We have a huge volume of surface runoff. And what comes through convention makes its way into water creek. We're looking at having a purple pipe system. For those who don't know, a purple pipe system is a way, means to utilize treated effluent, treated wastewater. It's the wastewater treatment plant is going to be a tertiary membrane system that gives you the cleanest product coming out of that, out of the wastewater treatment plant. But over and above that, we're going to put, these are named for is a polisher that takes that treated effluent and treats it again to the point where you get all the screen. And that's the water that we'll use on the purple pipe system for irrigation purposes and for in all of the commercial buildings down in that site or any of the condos that we get into, we're going to put the treated water in that as well. So we're utilizing all of the, the water, we want to be as sustainable as we can and we're working towards, as I say, a clean and green development. What else can I tell you? This portion here is probably not going to be developed in the near future. The intent is that we're going to do some work on the commercial side in here and here and a little bit in here. We also have set aside an area for the school. It's between Argyle, remember, up from Argyle Road, there'll be a service road coming down and the school site is in there. That probably won't be developed for many years to come. You have to ask the kids first. Right now, we're having kids. So that's why this building is empty. So tell to our kids, the school district won't be doing, the site is set aside for the school district. What else?
The board has some questions. Have you set aside property for the fire hall?
Property for the fire hall is, where are we at? Property for the fire hall is, no, here. This piece right here, just up from our number six road.
How much is that property?
I believe there's about, what's there, about four acres. So it's, you know, that's the piece that was, the then fire chief Dan were done and I looked at the property and that was the site that he chose. That's probably the best site because it's easy, highly accessed. You can have a pull-through type of fire hall, there's lots of land there. So it's a, it's a good area.
The board might be interested in actually doing a little walkover for that property.
Let me take the board on a complete tour release of the property and we can leave it and discuss whatever.
One of the things that we didn't talk about, Brian, is the wastewater treatment plant and waiting for the old lady to go ahead. We have had discussions with the CBRD and have technicals that are waiting for it to be. One of the conditions is that you did have to receive the technical plan. Gloria, do you want to wait until the CBRD endorses the agreement before we get that or can you get that to us now?
Well, I can give you technical data now, except if you or the board make changes then we're going one direction and having to go back and redo it all over.
So it might be better to wait until you get the agreement?
But we've got, you know, if it's the current setup, we can go that, you know, quicker there.
And when you say it's going to take 14 weeks, does that mean that you can work through the winter or is the rain going to?
Well, the assembly is done in Langley, so that's, that's the good news. What has to happen is once the assembly is done, it'll be in three different sections. So they'll take and they'll, I think they're going to barge it over anything we're going to do and then we'll do it onto the cloud road. Then once on the cloud road, we have to, it has to go onto a concrete pad. It has to have all of the electrical, the hydro, the tail. It has to have a wastewater setup in it. So we have to do some work with all of the, you know, the rains. As soon after, you know, you're meeting the RRD, the better because we need to get working for rains.
What is the whole, apparently you said there's a whole between you, the ID and the CBRD from going ahead. I'm told that the RRD and the UVI-B has to meet and give us our approval to the board.
The master development agreement requires that the CBRD endorse the agreement between you and the K. And their people and technical people right now are going through the agreement and are planning on probably in September presenting to the board the staff recommendation about whether they support that agreement for a while.
Well, that's not you, the ID, that's holding up that agreement right now?
No.
No.
Part of the process. Any questions?
Not really. When do we expect to see some working drawings of this occasion, that sort of thing? I think you're going ahead with two or four of them, Ron, telling us, in Argyle, are there working drawings for services that are available for review?
They're not available yet. They will be, they will be in the next 60 days rather than two weeks. Now, the process for that is we provide everything to the Ministry of Transportation and Highways as the approving officer and they're the ones that approve it. The referral will come here, but it comes from the Castration Highways. It goes to the RRD and to the UVI-B.
So all of those to have to approve by the ID of the board, right? No, they're approved by Castration Highways to the UVI-B.
I just have one last comment because of course we're out of time. The visit that created in the purpose committee, that committee has community people on that are keenly interested in having discussions with you and your staff or the technical pieces of all of this. So I'll leave it with Cleveland to maybe get in touch with the college course meeting.
Just maybe over the house, I want to make sure I'm available and.
Okay. Thank you.
And also ask the committee members to do the walk around.
Thank you. Will you want to stay or go? Okay. Julie, the next day, I'll give you the group of minutes. So we'll discuss before then the minutes of the previous meeting and I'd like a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion, approve them.
I'll second it. Please stand in. All in favor? Carry on. The next item of business is business arising from previous meetings and reported items brought forward on the camera meetings. The business arising from the June 50 meeting is just to report to you that the board did meet the CBRD at the end of June and we talked about a number of issues. Obviously, one of them being the Kensington project and how we can move that agreement forward. And we did agree that we would work at establishing a good working relationship. So we tentatively set some dates for meetings to begin to deal with some of the issues that are on the table. The other items relate to in-camera discussions. And the first one is a meeting on June the 26th that we had to deal with personnel and legal issues. At that meeting, the board made appointments to the fire committee, which was part of the personnel portion. And they did accept the resignation of the administrator effective July 1st with a 90 minute period. No, no, no.
Must have been my phone.
We also discussed the legal issue of the Bams small issues claim and agreed to negotiate with Mr. Bams around that issue. And the other issue that we addressed, of course, was the litigation with the Urnival. So regarding that issue, I'd like to give you some background information about how we came to make the decision that we made on that because I know that that's a concerning issue. With the board's previous lawyers, Canapati and Company, and early in May, a hearing resulted in the court laying out a plan on how to proceed with this matter through to conclusion, if you had proceeded and if Yuvid had continued to be involved. That plan included a number of hearings. It included taking possession of various computer hard drives. It included interviews for discovery and ended in 10 days of booked time in February 2012 for a trial. I think probably being on the underside, I would estimate that that would have cost us at least $200,000. They were expecting expert witnesses. They were having to bring in experts to retrieve data off the hard drives. And legal counsel at that time indicated that they were anticipating a long and difficult trial. On May the 12th, this board made the decision to transfer the case to Staples, McDonald and Stewart and to instruct them to implement an exit strategy. This decision was based on feedback from the community, a need to contain escalating costs and legal advice from Staples, McDonald and Stewart that Yuvid did not have the authority to initiate this action. On June 27th, another court hearing was scheduled and Mary's lawyer was scheduled to ask the court to dismiss the claim based on their argument that Yuvid did not have the authority to initiate this action. If that application had proceeded, our legal counsel advised that there was a 75 to 80% chance that it would be successful. And then a judgment imposed upon Yuvid, costs and special costs that would be substantial. Our legal counsel advised us to negotiate a withdrawal, which we did. That negotiation resulted in Yuvid agreeing to pay $15,000, which was not the initial request. And we agreed to file an order by consent with Mary dismissing the action. On June 26th, the board also made a motion to rescind any previous commitments made to the plaintiffs regarding indemnification and paying their costs. So as of June 26th, Yuvid is no longer paying the legal costs for the eight individual We had a second in-camera meeting the next day because our legal counsel wanted us to use very specific wording in the motions. So the intent from what we agreed to on the 26th, we had to specifically say exact wording on the 27th. So that's why we need to have another in-camera meeting to deal with that. On July the 9th, we had an in-camera meeting again. Surely the entire room is in-camera meeting as are we. And that in-camera meeting was to deal specifically with decisions around recruiting to the administrative position. We have agreed to recruit to that position. It will be point eight. At this point, we do not believe that it's a full-time position and we'll reassess that as it proceeds. We've already begun to recruit and on the back of your agenda is an ad and I'm already giving inquiries. So we're really hopeful that we're going to build this position. Hopefully September 1st, early fall. So that's the information that we're bringing forward from our in-camera meetings. The next business item is correspondence. So we'll go to the auditor's report. And the board has a package important from the auditor. That package contains the auditor's management report and all of the adjusting entries, plus the auditor's financial statements. First, I met with the auditors at the end of June and you will see in your package that there are seven adjusting entries which reflect changes that need to be made to the books to kind of balance everything. About a third of those adjusting entries are substantial. And while it's common for there to be adjusting entries, the number of adjusting entries in this case are quite significant. Many of them relate to errors and corrections regarding the transfer of funds between operating and capital lines. I'd also like to draw your attention to the management report. That's part of that package, which contains seven different recommendations to improve efficiency and accuracy. Three of them are particularly important. First one is that there were numerous errors in transfer. Um, the first one is that there were numerous errors in transfers between operating, capital, and reserve funds. And in fact, through our discussion, the auditor advised that they had to recreate the accounts for the reserve and capital funds because they were so inaccurate. And they charged us four to three hundred dollars to do that. A number of the recommendations also relate to, um, need for, um, the administration to provide some oversight and direction to, uh, staff doing the entries and to, uh, review those entries for correctness. And the third issue that was identified in that report was that the auditor has recommended establishment of a policy to address acceptable behavior in the office, which relates primarily to what they described as an inordinate amount of gossip. When Bruce and I met with the auditor, we, um, talked him into reducing the fee by four thousand dollars. And even with the reduction, we have a total audit bill of twenty-one thousand dollars, which is five thousand dollars over budget. So what I would like from the board is a motion to request, or request a motion to accept the auditor's report and to direct the administration to implement the changes that the auditor has recommended.
I'll make that motion. Uh, every word slightly, I would like to make a motion to accept the recommendations of the auditor's report and instruct the administrator to implement corrective action.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? The next, Mary. The second item under correspondence is a letter from Mary Reynolds that you have before you. This is an information I have only, this letter asked that the board clarify how the Local Government Act applies, uh, regarding indemnification. Um, I would just like to report that Yubid's legal counsel concurs with the information that was provided in Mary's letter, and that is that under section seven forty-three and two eighty-seven of the Local Government Act, the intent of indemnification is to provide protection to individual members in terms of the costs associated with actions brought against them while in the course of their duties. It's not meant to allow for payment of claims they have against other people. In its motions, the previous board agreed to pay legal fees and not seek back those The third correspondence item is a letter from the CPRD. What they asked us to do is to provide them with some input in how to, um, establish a recycling center, so to speak, in May. So I'd like the board to, uh, maybe discuss how you would like to respond to this or make a motion on how you would like to respond to this.
Well, it's not within our mandate to provide space. I don't know where we're asking for public space for such a, such a endeavor. The, uh, the program, I think, would be as our degree is kind of out of the question because of the wind and debris, maybe in wind revenue, et cetera, et cetera. I don't believe the school here, there's a property that we're here right now is an appropriate place for, for recycle. I don't know if there's room, unless it was out in the back of the field someplace. I don't think that's going to be an acceptable spot. So I don't know where we're in a position to, uh, to give the CPRD that kind of information, if you will. The only spot possibly would be the community center. I don't think that's a particularly good idea myself. They probably would agree with that either. I don't know what land would be available for the CPRD for, uh, for such a program.
Yeah, the only thing I can add is maybe, um, if it was, um, his property were at his point, um, we don't have any other options as well. So I'd like to make a motion on how you want to respond to this.
I'll make a motion that we, responding to what you said, we agree with the principle that we just do not have a sock to, uh, to keep it in on and that a sock becomes available sometime in the future, if we use.
Any further discussion? All in favor? The fourth item is, uh, against the information, it's a letter from the CPRD, um, to the Ministry of Community and, uh, the local community, community culture and cultural. Regarding the, um, transfer of the water license issue, through discussions, um, it is not at all clear that transferring the water license is in fact the requirement of the ministry. So, um, the CPRD has simply sent a letter to the ministry asking them to clearly state their position so that we know what we're talking about and we, uh, we look to CPRD regarding this issue. And number E, which is a late item that we just brought today, is a letter from Allen in Jersey to the board, um, stating that he, um, is resigning from the Yubid Board as it comes to the perspective immediately. So I'd like some kind of, um, motion from the board about what you'd like to propose.
But I'm in the position that we have to accept the resignation. Is he on the lawsuit?
We want to report, um, this is a fire rescue report for a minute. We had a, a last, uh, meeting, meeting on July fifth, and, uh, it was an inaugural meeting, and, uh, we appointed, uh, three members, time manager, Gordon McDonald, and Gary Olson in the committee. Uh, the fire chief requested the purchase of five new radio pagers at that meeting. Um, the old pages are really old and not much good and they're not very safe, so we, uh, decided to go ahead with that and also, uh, we don't have any actual memory of the fire parts other than the, um, sort of the, uh, higher up people that, um, normally have to pay the charge of fire and driving trucks, so we don't need an air brake course for that. And, uh, we, we put a process in for the fire chief to, uh, go ahead and instead of having the time to board and ask for those things, we retroactive that we will approve that board and the fire chief will, uh, has the authority to go ahead and purchase anything that needs to be, especially in these days. And, uh, the fire's also eleven, and, uh, there is a burn that infected, as everybody can see by the sign that we made in May. And, uh, small forty-centimeter campfires are allowed for cooking and warm only. And, uh, you can have a fire smaller than three meters in width and two meters in height. So that's it. That's, that's all you can do. So, uh, and, uh, the training, um, in June on the engine purchase and home works is ongoing, and there were a few minor repairs on the new, uh, fire truck. And some promotions, firefighter Webster to lieutenant and lieutenant Rainey is promoted to captain. So that would be part. I'll make a motion to get those sort of information, make a motion to subject these. Any discussion? All in favor? The public works?
Uh, public works met on July seventh. Superintendent Danville presented this must be public works report. The light level was fifteen, split three inches as of July. Divinity levels are, are under one M T U and core heat level is at zero point nine watts per million. Oil water test samples are tumor negative. I hope its daily water consumption is eleven hundred and eighty-seven cubic liters. Accordingly, the water flush valves have been turned down to reflect the higher summer water usage. Ten and twelve air valves in the system have been rebuilt. The remaining two valves require a fine space entry and will be done when the air tested is returned off the beam and recalibrated. The ultrasonic meter indicates a ten percent leakage in the system. This is deemed acceptable with, with similar systems. And the leaks are detected, they are repaired. During the winter, folks belonging to keep the cave stowed from the cargo reservoir. Uh, the placement boat is needed, that's the only way to carry out all the sampling. So if anybody down at the dock would have moved a boat for sale, preferably cheap. Now, public works committee is up and running. We've all done, and still have to do a lot of work to become in all aspects, to become informed in all aspects of our public works system. And I'll stay on to thank Dan and Keith for taking us on a guided tour of the water works, a very informative tour. Uh, we all learned a lot in the automotive profession, we got very clear science answers. And I feel that the field has not been that much, that's probably the sort of role.
I have a motion to accept the presentation.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? Do you want to add something about the water system?
Well, I'm sure you want to. I'll say it was.
Bruce?
Time finance committee, uh, we've had on the what, fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. Ten for myself, the chair, Gordon Hook, Pam Ramsey, and Hannah Mountain. The guests were Carol Molstad, Cleve, Paul Swin, and Alcar. We was called order at ten AM in the boardroom. And the committee is making four recommendations to the board as follows from the meeting. And number one is, uh, this committee reviewed the expenses surrounding the use of the debit card. The debit credit card arrangement is currently in place and arrangements made with the various suppliers fulfill its directive. Also, policy recommendations should be submitted to the board by the end of July. Number two, in order to lead by example on the current austerity, austerity measures initiated by the board, it was suggested that the trustees were going to monitor the balance of this term. Three, did Yubid initiate an amendment to our policy that allows for a ten percent late, late charge for overdue water pool accounts? And number four, that the board considered increasing the acting administrators' hours and were bringing Brent Johnson to get back for financial records by the end of July. The committee reviewed the financial statements provided by the administrator and they are attached for the board's review. It's further discussed that. As we move forward in work for this committee to function effectively, it was suggested that the following information be provided as a monthly financial package. And the reply items, uh, department revenue and expense statements, consolidated statements, balance sheets, list of checks issued each month, and the latest bank reconciliation. And, uh, this information should be available for the finance committee ten working days after the end of each month. The committee members also received a copy of the proposed water transfer agreement between Yubid and the CPRD in order, in order to provide comments with regard to the financial implications that may be faced by the incoming suburban district. These comments were before, were back to myself prior to July twenty-seventh. And, um, that accord is respectfully submitted by myself, Bruce, Lucy.
Motion first. Any information?
For information.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. The next item is strategic planning workshop. Um, I don't have a written report, but I just want to let you know that the, uh, the board has met twice now with our acting administrator to, uh, begin a process of strategic planning. Um, we do have meetings on the draft. Um, and our, our next step is to invite the, um, four standing committees of the board and the community participants from those committees to meet with us to look at the strategic plan. We really are feeling that we need to have at least a semblance of a plan in place before we begin budget preparation, which should happen by the end of August. So we'll begin back to our, our committees and local boards. And I think that we've, we've stretched our word a little bit in having them do some visioning and, um, talk to the fellow subjects about where we may want to go. The, uh, the other, next item that I would want to report on as well is the bylaws, policies, and procedures report. Um, this is another standing committee of the board that was created at the last meeting. Uh, we have appointed three community participants to remonet, um, and all three of them are here today. So, um, I'd like to welcome Jude Hayner and John Whitton and Jack Stevens. Those three people on our policy and bylaws committee. We're planning our inaugural meeting for the twenty-eighth of July. So with business, um, at the last board meeting, one of the questions from the audience was a request to have the board reconsider its start time from four thirty to seven o'clock in the evening. Um, and there seems to be a fair amount of support in the community to do that. So I would like to call on the board to make a motion regarding what they'd like to do.
I'll make that motion. I'd like, like to make a motion to change the start time of our regularly scheduled board meetings from four thirty PM to seven PM.
Second? And? Any discussion? I think the original time was changed primarily to accommodate Allen, who is no longer on board, so, um, a lot of people at work would be in time to be on this at night. It would actually work for the company at night. All in favor? The next item is signing officers, which Brenda no longer on staff, we're down to two signing officers, which is not good if either Cleveland or away because we have to have two signatures. So I'd like to ask the board to make a motion about increasing the number of signing officers and renewing Brenda. I'd like to make a motion that all chairs of the committees have signing authorities. So that would be please, yourself, yours. Second.
I'm sorry.
Question?
Would you want somebody to administer your official release?
Yeah, once we get an administrator to get in. I don't think that our acting administrator is interested in having a signing authority.
I'd be sure he'd favor it.
Yeah, I think we also have some implications for our bylaws. All in favor? The next item is access to the building. To this point, we've kind of been struggling with keys.
Can I drop a sec? The guy with the post office is here, and there's a white Dodge over there with a 0816 LV. He might be back in. Could you move your truck, please? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So access to the UBIT building, especially with communities having meetings in the evenings and that kind of thing is becoming a bit difficult to get into the building. So again, I'd like to motion from the board about how you'd like to handle keys and who should have keys and what keys.
I'll make the motion that all committee chairs have keys to access the building at the motorcycle office.
Any discussion? I guess we'll, because we don't have lots to change, I think we better be out there right now, so not worry much. But we'll have to get a couple of extra keys needed, but we'll have to deal with the crisis alarm, so.
And try and show action to those guys.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All in favor? Next item is a McCallkene deal, and this is an outstanding item from last, I think about February when they did the work on the Nelson Leaf. As I understand it, there was some errors made on their part regarding the location of the pipes. He's probably even more about this than I do. And there was discussion at a previous board meeting to request them to reduce their deal. That was not done, so we recently had more discussions with McCallkene, and the board has before them a summary that's been done by our acting administrator regarding that. So I think what she's suggesting is that previous board talked about asking McCallkene to write off $2,175 stem per deal because of their error. And we need some kind of a decision by the board on whether you want to accept that or whether you want to ask them to also write off some additional costs.
Why additional costs?
Well, I think it would be this to reduce, yeah, removal for a tree.
I think it was cost to wrap up, I think it was.
Any other motions pending?
I'll make a motion that McCallkene absorbed the $2,175 and the four cents. That's the cost, initial cost over, and let them absorb that and conclude the whole matter.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Next one is a leak allowance request from a landlord. What's included is a landlord has a leak on their property and also has quite high water bills, and they have formally requested that the board waive the water deals because of the leak. We do have a bylaw in place that requires owners to repair any service pipes on this property when they become ready, and the board may grant the allowance once every five years. In talking to Dan, that allowance applies only to the proceeding two months before the owner is totally overdue, and they're suggesting that then the landlord fixes the leak as soon as possible. This request, however, is to forgive water tools for three million periods, six months. We just got this yesterday, so haven't had a lot of chance to talk to either Ken or to Dan about it. And when I do talk to Dan about it, he was not clear on what the issue was and whether there was a continuing leak with the leader. Because of all of that, I would suggest that we table this until our public works staff have an opportunity to investigate further and to give us some kind of explanation about what the issue is and whether we should do this or not.
And therefore report to Dan.
Right. So I have a motion to change this until we investigate it.
I have a question. I'd be tired of the court. Anybody else?
Second. Yes.
I'm able to leave?
Till the public works staff can investigate the main cause of the condition. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Amy, Dana, we have three recommendations from the fire rescue committee. You come, and we need to go to get one of them individuals. First one is to ordering radial pagers to be retroactively authorized. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordering the radial pagers now to be retroactively authorized at the end of the meeting. Second, remember, I have children. And to be retroactively authorized, please, Dana. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? The fire department has twelve Survivor MK2 packs, which includes thirty bottles, which are no longer needed because of the purchase of twenty-two new Scott packs. There are two suggestions as to what to do with them, and the one is to donate them to firefighters of orders, who do donate them to third world countries, or two, try and find a fire point, which would probably be unlikely according to the fire chief because of their age and the mission. So I like the idea of giving those to firefighters of orders because we are. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to donate the twelve Survivor MK2 packs, including the sturdy bottles, to firefighters of orders. Second. Thank you. They have probably cost us much, as we have two of them, and we were getting by selling and trying to find out. All in favor? And Bruce, we've got three recommendations from your finance committee.
Yeah, four, being, I'd like to make three motions. The first one being, I would like to make a motion to increase the acting administrator's hours in order to receive an accurate set of accounting books and records by the end of July.
Second.
My rationale is, in order for the board to move forward in August with preparation of a budget for 2012, we need to be in a positive financial position with our books and records. Unfortunately, the limited hours allocated to complete this task have proven insufficient, and thus my motion to increase the acting administrator's hours, and I believe that's possibly having talked to Ken, probably twenty hours more than we had anticipated, and that that would be agreed that we would have that done by the end of July, if we come in on the weekend to accomplish that.
The issue there is that the income and expense reports that we get are current because that's kind of the operating accounts from January, the problem is the seventy adjusting entries, and getting all of that information into the books so that we can have an accurate balance sheet, which will show us how much money we have in all of our reserve funds, where our cash reserves are. So the finance committee really, and the various committees too, are beginning to feel quite frustrated that we don't have a very good, clear picture of where we're at financially. So it's making it more and more difficult to plan and to move forward, so that's why we want you to know by the end of, just draw a river that. So any other discussion? All in favor? Third.
Second motion coming from that meeting, I'd like to make a motion that the trustees for go over their honorarium for the balance of this year. I'll just briefly, I'll just say as volunteer trustees, the board needs to lead by example, and after initiating strict austerity measures to the fire department and the public works department in order to reduce their current budgets, this is what we can offer under the financial circumstances we're in today, so my recommendation is to work with committee recommendation.
I see we have about $4,000 left in that primary pool. Any other discussion? All in favor? Third. The last one.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the board incorporate a ten percent late charge on overdue water tool accounts.
Discussion?
Just a brief rationale is most other improvement districts encourage a late charge. It encourages payment from landlords, Peterville's own time. It costs the public works and the administration money to print, distribute, and collect late payments. And there is no cost recovery for this, so other than a late charge, so maybe we should recommend a ten percent late charge on overdue water tools.
How big charges have you been? You passed my guidance, or do you have to wait?
Oh, yeah, we would like to put ours outstanding legal account, so there's no late charge on the accounts, so we're aware of that motion for it. And late charging certainly could be a little on time. We do have one on the parcel tax, and that's the same thing, that's a ten percent late charge. I think we should incorporate that into our rolling calls as well.
What type of rule am I setting?
Well, right now, I think we have outstanding water tools of $9,000.
The administrator felt that by implementing the treaty that we can help and recover the public staff's policy. Any other discussion?
A ten percent of one line charge on the public works. I think you're missing it. Is there all of that?
No, I think the bylaw policy committee will have to have a look at that, and determine the exact ruling for that. So that will be up to the policy committee.
We have a policy.
Here, Dana, we have an existing policy for water, so I believe this would follow being amendment to that by law.
All in favor? Bruce. So that concludes the business portion of the meeting. At this point, we turn it over to you for about half an hour to ask questions.